I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for coming out here tonight. We are so thankful that you did. We recognize there are a lot of other things you could be doing on a Monday evening at this time. What I was thinking about this meeting and the purpose of the meeting and what I should be saying as your new superintendent, I was like, what's one of the things that I value the most? And it's relationships. It's us getting to know each other to find that common ground. So I'm going to share, those of you who are staff members heard some of this at our opening meeting, but I'm going to share just a little bit about me, which is really uncomfortable, but also I think it models what we should be doing together so we get to know each other. So part of it is about the lens that we look through. And some of you I've known for lots and lots of years, and some of you I've never met before. So with that saying, like what determines our lens? Right down there at the bottom, our personal backgrounds, our past experiences, our level of curiosity, our level and desire of wanting to know and understand, all of those pieces and parts. So who am I? These are some of the things you might know about me. I have two daughters, Breckin and Shaw. And that's Gunnar, my husband. That's Oakley. Lots of pictures of Oakley on my phone. If anyone wants to see pictures of Oakley, I'm happy to share. My kids might tell you I have more pictures of my dog. That's also my stress reducer. I walk the dog often and I start a lot of conversations. Well, when I was walking the dog, I thought, like, some of my friends here might be a little tired of that. Well, often monitor. There's April and I. I love to be pushed. And April was going to go run a half marathon and she's like, oh, you should sign up. And I'm like, yeah, I should. That was another lifetime where I was running marathons. And I didn't think I was going to go. And about three weeks before, April was like, you can do this, Becky. And she was right, and I did. And there's Shaw and I. On our 18th birthdays, they go skydiving. It's part of the response. We want them to make their first year responsible decision as adults with their parents. So that was Shaw and I at Adventure. And there's Breckin and I at Taylor Swift. What you might not know about me is I grew up in a little colored family in Detroit, Michigan. My dad was a train engineer for 42 years when he retired. And my mom was a school librarian. And I never figured out why she liked to do bulletin boards. And I think that's why I went into secondary education. And she then, at one point, because of all kinds of things happening, she became a secretary at the high school, not the one I worked at, a different one in the district. I'm the youngest of two. I have an older brother named Derek. I have always loved to read. Is there anybody in the crowd who read the Trixie Delvin series like I did? Yes, see, there's always one. I have them in a garbage bag. I don't know why. I'm going to read them again, but every place I go, there's a garbage bag of 36 books. Did you? No? And there's my brother and I. As we've traveled through the years, apparently we had similar bangs from much younger. And I don't know what my mom had going on at that firm, but I'm sure it was cool. And then what I talked about was the lenses I look through were very big lenses. As a matter of fact, my brother had lots of things that he called me based on glasses that I needed to see. That was me in seventh and eighth grade. I'm not sure what that hairstyle was, but I'm sure when I did it that morning for pictures, it was the best thing ever. I was a city kid, but my parents, my dad took all of his vacation at one time and took us up to Gaylord, Michigan, to a very small cabin with very little electricity and no TV. And we spent five weeks there. So I feel like I had that city kid experience, but I also had that country kid. And it was, it didn't matter if there was athletics. It doesn't matter. We were pulled out. We did this as a family, and it was a no matter what. And school was extremely important to me. I loved school. I played school well. My brother, on the other hand, would have been labeled an out of his students. He tried to take me with him, but I refused. And some of the pieces that, like, I went to Central Michigan. You know, I made fun of my mom's hair, my senior picture hair. I moved to Wisconsin for love. Gunnar actually is from Michigan as well, but he got an internship at SMC in Somerset. So then we moved out here and I got my first teaching job at Mounds Park Academy in the cities. So we lived in White Bear for a while, and then we moved up here. I'd been a teacher. I'd been a school counselor, assistant principal, a principal, director of instruction. And now feel super unfortunate to be serving in this role as superintendent. Education is a hobby for me and a profession. So as much as I value work and life balance, because it's my hobby, I spend a lot of time thinking about education. And my personal goals, and this is what I shared with staff for this year, is to be present and curious. And that I wanted them to very seriously see what I mean about being present, showing up, having an open door policy, making sure that I'm at events, learning how to reach out to the community. One example is I'm talking to a retired teacher at the Hall of Fame event. And we were like, how great would it be to bring back all the retired employees of this school district and have time together, just to be together, but also for us as the people currently working here to thank them for laying the foundation of what they've done for us. So just ideas like that, and of course actively listening. And being curious is asking questions, not because I don't understand, but because I want to understand on a deeper level. And listening actively, notice those are both sides. Exploring new ideas, exploring existing ideas, and reflecting and wondering. And to me, if I can do that all of this year, I'll be able to serve the community in the way that it deserves to be served. Because I am super proud to serve this district, because together, our impact is limitless. I think this is really cool. This is every student in our school district. So this is, this is the why, always the why. We are here, and that's what I will always focus at my center. So it was nice to meet you. There's a little bit about Becky. I'd like to have an opportunity for everybody else up here to introduce themselves. Sam Carlson. That's perfect.
I'm Corey Schmidt.
Craig Brunson.
I'm Kaija Martin.
Brooke Coulter.
I'm Emma Gilvin. She is one of our student representatives.
My name is Justin Andrews. I'm one of the attorneys for the school district. I may just have some short prepared remarks before I turn it over to the board and to the electors. The Ritz School District's annual meeting can be traced back to our country's founding and New England town meetings. As time has passed, it became complicated to run a school district through annual or even periodic electors meetings. So the states, including Wisconsin, created elective boards of education. Over the years, there's been a series of court cases defining what is properly the responsibility of the board of education and what is properly before the electors at an annual meeting. The court cases reflect the fact that unless specifically spelled out the statutes as within the jurisdiction of the electors, it is the school board's responsibility. Nevertheless, an annual meeting is still required by state law, and the electors of the district are charged with taking certain actions during an annual meeting. With this in mind, the agenda tonight addresses items which require the approval of the electors and those who are present this evening. In addition to making sure that we stick to items that are properly before the electors, I am also responsible for assisting the chair in running a courtly meeting. We will use Robert's rules of order tonight. And my experience is that these meetings run best if we stick to a couple of rules. One, wait for the chair to call on you. If called upon, please stand and identify yourself, first and last name. If you're making a motion, ensure that the clerk has the correct motion. Once the motion has been made and seconded, we request that whoever speaks limits his or her presentation to three minutes. We ask that a speaker in favor of the motion be followed by someone who opposed, if that applies, and vice versa, so everyone has a chance to speak once. And after speaking on an issue, we ask that you not attempt to speak again unless no one else wants to speak. Votes will be decided orally. If requested by any elector, the votes will be decided by hand. If requested by a majority of the electors, we will utilize secret ballots. Pursuant to state statutes, only electors are eligible to vote. That means residents who are over 18. If there is a challenge to a voter, I will issue an oath to the challenged individual, who will then be allowed to vote. Because only electors can vote, the board has indicated a desire to limit discussion to district residents. Does anyone have any questions regarding the rules? Hearing none, we'll now select a chair for tonight's meeting. Nominations do not require a second, and I will ask three times for additional nominations and then close nominations. I request that you do not move to close the ballot. You will then vote on the person's nominee. If only one, our job is easy. If two, the chair will be determined by a majority vote of those voting. If there are three or more nominees, again, a majority of those voting will determine who is elected chair. However, if there's no majority, the least voted getter will drop out and will revote. If there's a tie for the least voted getter, we'll flip a coin to determine who's dropped out. So I will start. Who would like to nominate someone to serve as chair for tonight's annual meeting?
I should just nominate Brooke Coulter.
One nomination for Brooke Coulter. Going twice, would anyone like to nominate someone to serve as chair? A third time for nominations for chair. I will close the nominations. And there is no challenge?
Thank you so much. Item F is I would entertain a motion to follow Robert's rules of order during the annual meeting proceedings. Is there anyone that would like to make this motion?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Kaija Martin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gordon. Any further discussion? I will say this is a meeting of the people. Feel free to help make the motions. All those in favor say aye. Opposed would be nay. That is approved. Item G is the adoption of the agenda. Does everybody have a copy of the agenda? It's in the packet. I can move it to you. No objections to the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
My name is Pete Herbert. I assume.
Motion by Pete Herbert. Is there a second? Second by Bob Wright. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed would be nay. That is approved. Item H, the treasurer's report. Mr. Craig Brunson, like, or treasurer?
All right. So the district's 22 and 23 general purpose financial statements are being audited by Clifton Morrison and CPA consultants and advisors from O'Fallon, Wisconsin. Initial phase of the fieldwork on the audit of the district's financial records is in progress. During this phase of the audit, they are reviewing the financial records of the district's various funds to determine the necessity. Any material adjustments to record balances included therein prior to the printing of the district's year-end financial statements. The district's 22 and 23 audited financial statements will be presented and filed with the Wisconsin Department of Destruction in accordance with Wisconsin statutes S 120.14.
With that, we will move on to item two, which is the budget hearing. Oh, wait. I stand corrected. Sorry, Shannon. I'll entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Bob Wright? Motion by Bob Wright. Is there a second? Second by Aaron Morrison. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed would be nay. That is approved. Shannon, budget hearing.
It's hard to top Dr. Stiles introduction. I do not have any slides. But for those of you that I have not met, my name is Shannon Grindell, and I am the district business manager. I officially started with the district on July 1st, but I was on site for a couple of months before that, helping out. This is my 12th or 13th budget hearing. Each one goes a little bit different, but I do want to reiterate what Dr. Stiles said, and thank you all for being here. This information is not necessarily the most exciting information, maybe not to you, but to somebody that does it every day, it's a little bit exciting. So with that, we will get started on the information that's in the presentation. It does go along with the information that's in your packet. It's not verbatim what's in your packet. It's kind of a broad overview. So we'll go through each fund and talk a little bit about what's into each fund. We'll focus more on the general fund, just as where, as that's where most of the money for the district resides. For right now, we'll talk about, a little bit about the Biennial State Budget for '23, '24, and '24, '25. Some of the changes that were given to us for these two years were the $325 increase per pupil. That was for '23, '24, and '24, '25. That was in the revenue per member. The low revenue ceiling was increased from $10,000 to $11,000. And for Osceola, that meant $1,000 per member increase. And then there was a $0 increase in per pupil aid. So basically, what that means is that the increased revenue that we received for the district primarily happened on the revenue limit. Other assumptions that we made for this search budget, where the pupil count, that's always the largest factor for us, we're using an estimated 1,420 FTE, and that means full-time equivalency. That doesn't necessarily mean heads and seats, because not every student is worth one. Pre-K is worth, I believe, $0.4. So we have to take the head count, and then we use some formulas to get down to the FTE. So head count is 1,541, and once we do that calculation, we get down to 1,420. Property value, we will wait to this, for this to be certified by the Department of Revenue on October 1st, but right now, we are seeing an 18.5% increase on the property values within the district. We receive this information preliminarily from Baird. I don't foresee this changing, as they have some pretty good, pretty good inside information that they give to us. And then the last piece of the puzzle for us for the budget is the DTI state aid certification, which will come on October 15. Right now, preliminarily, we are looking at about $9.6 million in state aid. At any time, if you guys have questions, please just raise your hand, and I will.
How does the pupil count compare from last year to this year?
I believe we are down about 42 students. There's a slide at the very end that I will pull up that shows the last three years. It's also in your, it's in your packet. Is it, is it 42 or 41? Forty.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
How certain are you of this 18.5% increase in the pupil evaluation?
I am 99.9%.
That's huge. You were dealing with only 4 or 5%.
Actually, last year it was high as well. For the last couple of years, it's been pretty high. We were told to do our preliminary budgets on about 4% for this year. So when it came in at 18.5%, we were also quite shocked. But I am, like I said, I'm 99.9% of the 18.5%.
You mentioned that there was no increase in per pupil aid, and can you, can you explain that 325 increase per member and how that is not per pupil aid? I'm not quite sure.
Yep. So there's two different ways that the district receives revenue. They receive revenue from the revenue limit, and then we receive revenue in aids from the state, meaning categorical aids or general aid. The revenue that we receive on the revenue limit is directly linked to that $325 per increase. So we receive so much money per student. And previously, it's been $10,000, and it's been capped at $10,000 since, I believe, about 2018 or 19. Don't quote me on that. But one of the big pieces this year in this Biennial budget was that $325 increase. Now, for us, we were at $10,000, but we were able to go to $11,000 because of that second bullet point, where they, they raised the low revenue ceiling from $10,000 to $11,000. So next year, we will get to go to $11,325, and then $11,650 year after that. Does that help? This is just a good visual of how we break down the sources that we receive for the district. So you can see that our state sources are about 46%, local sources at 51%. Federal has dropped this year, and that is in direct relation to the fact that SIR funds have gone away. We've used all of our SIR funding, and then other sources. So the state sources that we receive are just what I said, categorical aids, the general aid that we receive from the state, the local sources are property taxes that we receive, student fees that we've taken the door at sporting events. The majority of it, pretty much all of it, is the local. There's a comparison on the bottom. You can see that we are close. The reason that the local levy has, or the local sources have gone up from '22, '23 is that we did see that increase on the levy for this year because of the $3 million operating referendum that was passed that you will see on the revenue limit for this year. And then conversely, on the expenditure side, this is just a visual of showing how the budget, our expenses going out. You can see salary and benefits are our largest expense. They will always be our largest expense at 72.5%. Total expenses for the district, about $26 million per year. And we'll dive into this a little bit deeper, and it is represented in the packet as well. Fund balance. It's a kind of a hard concept to grasp, but fund balance is just a snapshot in time. It's a snapshot of June 30th, the end of the fiscal year for the district. Per board policy, fund balance shall not fall below 20% or exceed 30%. The reason that we have fund balance is to make the liabilities for tax law or bond rating, avoid short-term borrowing, emergency, and optimize investments. You can see that we've steadily increased our fund balance the last three years. This has been deliberate. We anticipate that next year, once this operating dollars fall off the revenue limit, that we will be looking at a deficit, and that we will need to dip into that fund balance to utilize it for one or two years before starting to talk about what our next steps are. Any questions about fund balance? The special trust fund, Fund 21. This is where we house our gifts and our donations, our student activities, and our scholarship funds. The best way that I like to explain this, this isn't necessarily money that belongs to the district. This is where our clubs exist. This is just a spot where we are the fiscal agent for these funds. This is where we, it's just a mechanism in which they can put their money in and take their money out, and we can track it for them. Special education fund is the second largest fund that we have and operate within the district, and it is directly linked to Fund 10. It's what we call a self-balancing fund, meaning that at the end of the year, if there's a deficit in there, Fund 10 has to make a transfer, and it will always make a transfer because it's not funded at 100%. Fund 10 has to make a transfer to Fund 27 in order to balance it to zero. So this is a big topic in conversation at the state level. One of the pieces that was, that was discussed in the Biennial budget was the potential of having that state aid percentage go up to 45% and then 60%, which would be huge, because basically, whatever you're not transferring from Fund 10, you're getting back into your general fund to use on general operations. So you can see on the second piece of that, that the last three years, the amount of money that we've transferred out of the general fund to cover the cost in Fund 27. Any questions about Fund 27? Our debt funds, Funds 38 and Funds 39. Fund 38 is non-referendum debt, meaning that we can't put money on the revenue limit in order to pay the debt. This debt for the district was paid off last year, so it's no longer something that we are looking at within the budget. And then the Fund 39 debt is referendum approved debt, meaning that we will levy these dollars on the revenue limit, and then we will conversely make that payment throughout the year. Right now, we are levying for the $10 million facility projects at the high school, middle school, and intermediate school. We are required to show the public a debt schedule. This is the debt schedule for Funds 38 and 39. Now, it is 139 because Fund 38 debt has been paid off. So you can see that in 2029 and 2030 is when the $10 million referendum project is likely to be paid off. We have a capital projects fund and a Fund 49. The capital projects fund was something that was started many years ago as a mechanism for districts to have excess funds at the end of the year to transfer over in order to essentially, what it become a savings account for districts to use for capital projects. Once the districts started to transfer money, they had to wait five years just before they could start using it. I tend to see larger districts utilize this more because they have more dollars to transfer over. I believe we have about $500, and right now, we are looking to utilize it more in the future. And then Fund 49 is a direct relation to if you have a capital project, you will have a Fund 49 and utilize it. We are looking at closing up our Fund 49 because our project is coming to an end, or has, actually has come to an end in June of 2023. Fund 50 is our nutrition services fund. This is another fund where it's not a self-balancing fund, but it is not allowed to go into the negative. So if it does go into the negative, Fund 10 will have to make a transfer to cover the cost. Susan has done a wonderful job thus far of keeping it in the positive, but just due to the fact that the free meals have ended in June of 2022, and the reimbursement rates from the state have gone down, we will potentially be looking at a transfer out of Fund 10 in the upcoming years. And then our community service fund is another fund that we are allowed to levy for on the revenue limit. And within that fund, we house our community education, our kids' club, middle school athletics, and our aquatics. On the levy for this year, we have $125,000 splotted to cover the cost of these programs. And I refer, I've been referring a lot to tax levy, and this is just a snippet of what the overall revenue limit levy worksheet looks like. This is a three-year comparison. The actual revenue limit worksheet actually gives only a two-year comparison. So this will help show you what we've done for general fund operations, the non-referendum debt, the debt service, the Fund 39 debt, and then the community service fund. It gives the total levy, a percentage increase from the previous year, and then at the very bottom, it says net levy rate, but that's also often referred to as mill rate. So you can see that this year, we have increased the overall levy 17.8%, 9% if you round up. However, the mill rate has gone down 3 cents to 6.83. The increase is directly related to the fact that, twofold, we received a $1,000 per student on the limit, and also, we have the $3 million operational referendum on there as well. Any questions about this one? Private school voucher aid deductions have become a thing, a topic of conversation. I would say probably more so in the last three years, from my perspective, just because I think it's really caught on, and it's becoming, the dollar amounts are becoming higher and higher. You can see that since '15, '16, or '17, here, it has crossed the taxpayers of this district almost $900,000. So what that means is that the private school that we have within the district has vouchers. And they take that voucher dollar, and it comes straight out the aid that is allotted to us as a public school. We then, in turn, are allowed to put that dollar amount back on the levy, and then we tax the taxpayers that dollar amount. So you can see last year was about $85,000, and this year, we have a budgeted amount of $100,000. It could be a little bit more, it could be a little bit less. So this is a good illustration of what that mill rate would be without that additional $100,000, and then obviously what it is with that $100,000 in there. We always just like to show where we are in comparison to our peers. So this is the Middle Border Conference, and this is last year's tax rate, because we're still in the realm of all of these districts having their annual meetings. We technically have this district until October 31st to have annual meetings, so they're sprinkled throughout the fall here. So you'll see that last year, these were the dollar, mill rates, I'm sorry, mill rates for each of these districts. And it's just a good illustration to show that we are being fiscally responsible as a district and sitting at the second to the lowest in the Middle Border Conference. Just some future budget challenges that we're looking at. As I mentioned earlier, we have that operational referendum. I apologize, that's a typo. It's just a one-year operating referendum that we have, the $3 million coming out at the end of this year. As usual, there's always operational increases, right? I think we have some exceptionally high percentage increases happening with supplies, utilities. We've seen CPI increases coming at a rate that has been astronomical in the last couple of years. Hopefully, that's going to level out. Declining enrollment is something that we are dealing with as a district, but also, districts are dealing with statewide. It's not just us. It's a statewide problem. And then the topic of the elementary school and how we're going to move forward with that. And I do believe we are going to be settling some. And I do believe we were going to be settling some community engagement sessions to, to go over that. I'm not quite sure we've actually had the details, but more to come. Right? Yes?
What is CPI?
CPI is Consumer Price Index. So that's what we use to determine, um, you know, the potential increase that we should give for salaries for staff. So we try to look at the CPI, cost of living is another term that we use for that. Um, in the last couple of years, it's been going up at a rate of about eight, seven to eight percent.
I would like people to know Ron Kornick, that's not showing up in salaries eight percent.
I'm sorry, is that what I'm saying?
Ron Kornick, eight percent CPI, it's not showing up in salaries for your employees in this district.
You're saying that, that, that's not how much the staff is getting, right?
Correct.
Yes. Yep. CPI is a nationally... Yep, that's what, is the gauge of, that's what we're, we look at.
Don't they use the state CPI?
No. No. We use the Consumer Price Index when we look at what the percentage, we're not bound to the state CPI in order for increases. Any other questions? I have a question. Any other questions?
Um, just, this is just about vouchers.
Yeah.
Do I have to say my name?
No.
Doesn't matter. Okay, good. But my question is, um, you had mentioned that the money goes to like a private or a charter school or whatever. Um, and then that money is put back on the levy. So is it like the taxpayers are taxed twice? So like that money goes to a private school, but then the taxpayers that have already paid this to go to the public school that they're taxed on it again?
Nope. So it comes off of our aid. So there's a very complicated formula at this, formula at the state level. And they say Osceola School District gets this much aid. There's this much in vouchers within the district that goes to that. Then they say, okay, well now you're allowed to take that dollar amount and put it on your revenue limit and tax your taxpayers. So we then tax you on the revenue limit for it. So you don't pay the private school tax at all? It comes off the general aid. Well, okay, essentially, yes, through the, through the general, however the general aid is given to the state. So it could be through sales tax, it could be through, um, pro, I, I can't say property tax. The general aid is a conundrum of whatever is made up from the state, but it's not from us. We're not taxing you twice as the district. It's coming from the state general aid fund. So I would have to get a breakdown of what's made up of the general aids from the state of Wisconsin in order to give you an actual answer.
So, so, yeah, 'cause I've just never heard that before. So money that you have to give away, right, through the voucher program, you have to.
We don't get, yeah, I mean, take it up the top.
Yeah, right. Right. And so, but then you actually get that money back?
From the levy.
Okay.
Yep. So we then put it on the levy and then the taxpayers are taxed on it.
Okay.
From the levy's perspective. And I can probably give a breakdown of what's at the state.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Probably through sales tax and other obscure taxes. Yes.
Uh, you, you said that you do that because you're allowed to do that? Are you, are you just doing it because of Ken or are you doing it because of operational costs?
Well, we're doing it because we're allowed to do it. You know, as you can see from our perspective, a hundred thousand dollars probably isn't going to make or break us. But in other districts, um, you know, you're looking at, it could be millions of dollars that are going to these private schools, depending on how many private schools you have within the district that become voucher schools. Not all, not all private schools are voucher schools. There's steps that they need to take to become voucher schools, but, um, for us, we're lucky that it's been, I don't want to say a small amount because a hundred thousand's not small, but it could be millions that are coming, um, off the aid for some districts.
And then does that go hand in hand with declining enrollment?
It could. Um, I don't know how many students that are ours that are at that private school. We have to, you know, find out. I don't take care of the open enrollment. Um, I don't have that question. I can probably find out for you though.
So you're not saying the private school has to be in the district. You're saying students from the district have to go over the door to the private school.
Private school has to be within the district. Yep. In order for us to put it on our, our, yes. Private school has to be within the district to put it on levy. Questions for Shannon? Hey, this is the most amazing that I've had in ten years. All right. Well, that keeps us within our budget hearing. Is there any other questions, comments, or anyone that would like to address the board regarding, uh, the budget hearing? All right. Seeing none, we will close the budget, budget hearing and move on to the resolutions portion. Item A is adoption of the proposed levy for the twenty-two for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, be it resolved that there be levied against the taxable property of the school district of Osceola, villages of Osceola and Director, towns of Alden, Bargington, Garkville, and Osceola, Polk County, and the towns of Somerset and Starbury, St. Wright County, Wisconsin, to sum up nine million five hundred forty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars for the operation of the elementary and secondary schools of the district, one million ninety-three dollars, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars for debt obligation, and one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for its community service. That total being ten million seven hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars by school. Is there anybody that would like to make that one? That, or a motion to approve that resolution? No, I did not. Sorry.
Tim Johnson, I will thank him.
Perfect. Question by Tim. Is there a second? Second by David, Terry, Tracy. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay. Item B.
Be it resolved by the electors of the school district of Osceola, that the following year's salaries be adjusted to the members of the board, three thousand dollars each person. Be it further resolved that the board members pay the actual and necessary expenses of a board member when traveling outside the district in the performance of his or her duties. I approve.
Guys, it has read the resolution. Is there somebody that would like to make a motion? Can you say your name?
Amy Vanna.
Amy Vanna makes the motion. Is there a second? Brooke Roy. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many hours do you guys work?
On the board or on your full-time job?
No, 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 on your, on the board.
A lot more than I ever thought I would.
I wouldn't even know.
So it's like lots of hours, right?
It means how much time you spend here in the meeting, but there's also the time that you're in the community and you're talking with someone. There's also the time I'm researching policies at home. There's also the time I'm chatting with the president. There's...
Taking phone calls. Or just our own research on what the elementary school coming up. So some of us spending time on looking at how other districts have done it and what's feasible for us. Like, yeah, it's, I wouldn't even know what to say.
So is this, um, is the three thousand dollars like an average of what people get paid? I mean, is that what other school board members get paid?
So I would say varying around the state, um, districts do it by meeting. Some do it as a lump sum, some do it monthly. I think it just depends on what the school district has done in the past.
I know St. Croix falls there at three thousand, but the president gets like three thousand four hundred or three thousand six hundred.
Can, can we in this meeting give you a raise? No, I'm s, I'm very serious. I'm very serious.
So that is an authorized power of the electors. Um, however, there is a motion and a second on the table.
Right. So I'm just asking the question.
So in order for that to be on the table, the motion would need to fail and would need to come back to the table for a motion.
There could be an amendment.
Could be an amendment. Thank you, Tim.
So since this is a discussion, my thought is that people who would volunteer and do something like this, you know, the hours that you put in, I think that is, did you get three thousand before last year?
We should add three thousand all the years I've been on the board, actually.
Yeah, it was time, Tim and I were on the board way back, like, probably ten years.
So my...
Before that, it was twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, so my thought, I mean, we don't have to go up a thousand dollars or anything, but it just to me with, um, with how things have gone up, you know, like what we just saw, our eighteen and a half percent or whatever it was. It's like, I, I just have a thought and just that maybe you guys should get a raise.
I appreciate your words. Thank you very much. Um, I would say it is an honor to be able to serve my community in this capacity.
For sure, for sure.
I feel very blessed to have the three thousand dollars. I tried to use it personally to do trips and things with my family to supplement the time and the dinners I'm away doing this. Um, I am very grateful for the three thousand dollars.
Right.
And so I appreciate the kind words.
I, Tim Johnson, I will thank an amendment to the motion to increase the salary to thirty-five hundred dollars annually.
Amen.
And I'm gonna sit here and feel real awkward. All right.
I'd like to second that.
So that takes us down a whole different path here. So let me just pause here. So now the original motion kind of sits off to the side and now we have a proposed amendment that Tim Johnson has made to increase the annual salary to thirty-five hundred dollars. Correct?
Correct.
Is there a second? Lisa, second. Can you say your name?
Larry Medrick.
Any further discussion purely on the, on the amendment? Purely on the amendment?
I just, I just want to say that I spent quite a few years on board and I know that no one runs for the school board or most boards because of the salary. And, uh, the, the time that's put in, people don't understand the time that is put in, anybody. If you're, if you're gonna do a job, you're gonna do a good job. It takes a lot of research. And I think it's a, it's a great idea to, to see a boost in salaries.
Okay. Any other further discussion on the amendment, check hand. So seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay.
Nay.
Okay. Let the record show that the, um, that the amendment passed. Brings us back to the original agenda item and the motion that was made by, I'm gonna sign my notes here, Amy Vanna and Brooke Roy. That motion would read as we have, but the amount would say thirty-five hundred dollars. Any further discussion on that agenda item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay. That is approved. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item C, operate short-term, short-term borrowing for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Uh, be it resolved, if the school district of Osceola is authorized to borrow two one million five hundred thousand dollars in short-term loans and the operation maintenance of the schools in the district for the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four school year.
There's a resolution. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve that resolution? Bob, Bob, what's your point, Bob? Is there a second? Second by Tim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay. That is approved. Item D, operate the sale and surplus property and more items for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Be it resolved, have property and more items that are declared surplus by the school board and not needed by the district be sold as requisitioned.
Got the resolution that passed. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve that resolution?
Pete Cameron, also more.
Pete Cameron. Second, second, second. Say your name.
James.
James. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay. That is approved. Item four, new business. A, set a date for the twenty, twenty-four annual meeting and budget hearing.
All right. Be it resolved by the electors of the school district of Osceola that the date for the two thousand twenty-four annual meeting and budget hearing be set for Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
That's the resolution. And is there anyone that would like to make that motion? To approve that for a motion? Seconds. Who made the motion?
Oh, I'm...
I'll make the motion.
Or is making that motion.
I got you, please.
Yep.
Or has got the motion? Has a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay. That is approved. I only heard a second, so. Any other business before the board under express powers of the Wisconsin State Statute one twenty dot ten, items one through nineteen? It would have had to have been moved to the clerk prior to this meeting in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes for open meeting laws. Seeing as we have none, we will move on to the next meeting information. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three at six thirty PM in the district office. If that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. From anyone? Motion by Chadway. Is there a second?
One second.
Pete Cameron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be nay. Director, thank you everybody.